We moved from Tuesday to today because of some bids that we had out. And we wanted to see what those bids came in before we did anything. So at this time, I'm going to ask Freddie if he would say the invocation for us.
Heavenly Father, Lord God, as we come unto you today, we want to thank you, God, for all your wonderful blessings in life. We thank you, Lord, for watching over us each and every day. Lord, I pray that you would reach down and bless our county, bless the business that we conduct here today. Lord, each and every time that we stand to conduct the people's business, Lord, I pray that your blessings, that we would always follow your lead to help make our county a greater place to live. Lord, I pray for the ones that's less fortunate than we are today, the ones that might not have a home to go back to, the flood victims, Lord, I know that they're still struggling out there. I pray, God, that you would watch over them, Lord, and protect them and provide for them as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
Ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Present.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Chet Hawks if he'd lead us in the place to leave.
I plead the fifth, to the flag of the United States of America, to the code of which they stand, one nation, but under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I get into the heart of this agenda, I just want to say that me, Jackson, I did a Facebook Live the day before yesterday based on the reports from the National Weather Service. And you know, we've done this before. We really did not get the weather that they predicted. Unfortunately, we still had quite a bit of rain, and we had more trees down. We've had additional damage to county roads over the last week or so from the rain. We just can't seem to catch a break. But we did miss... Good job, Fabian.
You got it covered, brother.
Fabian's had his hands full, his crews have had their hands full. We just can't catch a break. There's been so much rain. And we've asked people... When I do those Facebook Lives, I do them to try to get important information out to the public, whether it's impending weather or updates on, you know, flood recovery, disaster recovery efforts. And nevertheless, you always have people who want to chime in with criticisms, and instead of actually calling the road department and asking for a work order to be put in, they just want to go on Facebook and gripe. Most of the time, a lot of them don't really know what they're talking about. The best ones, my favorite ones, are when they complain about state roads and blame the county for it. I mean, I can't, I can't help it if you don't know the difference between a state road and a county road. The simple fact of the matter is, if you call the road department, if you call the road department, we'll put a work order in, we'll send the road foreman out for that district to look at it. But there's over a thousand miles of county roads we've identified. I'm not sure what the number is now. It depends on, we're trying to verify it, somewhere in the 2,000 to 3,000 range of areas on county roads which have been damaged. And we have roads that were damaged in 2022 that were on the list to be repaired, and now those same roads have additional damage. This storm is going to delay the repairs on the 2022 flood because areas where we've had additional damage, and Fabian gave an example yesterday of an area where we had about 50 feet of damage on a road, now it's 100 feet. So we can't go in and fix 50 feet of it. People say, "Well, why didn't you fix the other 50 feet?" Well, because we're going to have to go back to FEMA on some of these roads and find out how we're going to have to handle that, because you're going to have to separate it out between the two flood events. But all of those areas have to be reevaluated, and it's going to take some time. We're going to talk today about the Woodman Summer Bridge. We're going to talk about the Middle Elk Bridge. And we, we're going to make some progress on those. Hopefully, the Woodman Summer Bridge will start next Tuesday. We hoped to do it Monday, but we forgot it was Memorial Day. But it hopefully will start Tuesday, assuming we get the contract signed by then. The plan is for the contractors start on that one, and as soon as that one's done, they'll go to the Middle Elk, Middle Elk Bridge. So I just wanted to let everybody know that if there is a problem, please don't Facebook me or one of the commissioners, because we may not see it. If you put a post up on Facebook, we may not see it. But if you call the county judge's office or the road department, every call that comes in, there is a record of that, every call. So people say, "Well, I tried to call you." Well, no, you didn't, because we've got a record of every call that comes in. And if you message me, or Ronald, or Freddie, or Bubby, or if you message Fabian, or if you called the road foreman, which somebody, you know, there's no guarantee that a work order gets generated, but if you call the judge's office, or you call the road department, there will be a work order generated to make sure that it goes into the system and it's addressed, because I've had five or six messages today. And it's hard for me to have to go back through, if I'm, you know, if I'm driving particularly, to try to find a message or, you know, to try to keep up with them on... So it's so much easier, and it makes sure that your concerns are addressed if you would just call the road department.
And Judge, I'd like to clarify something for the people, because I've been hammered this whole week. I am their voice. They call me if the problem... The way it works, I call Fabian, tell Fabian what their concern was. Then Fabian, they don't understand, I don't have, this commissioner don't have, or that one, the day-to-day operations control. They need to know it takes time, and somebody's going to be first in this process, and somebody's going to be last. It has to be that way.
You know, when I was state senator, and I've said this, the way county government operated in this county for years, it was done illegally. I don't know if that shocks anybody. But magistrates did not have any legal authority outside of court meeting, just like school board members can't go out and tell a principal what to teach or who to hire. When I was state senator, I couldn't call the state police and say, "I want you to go arrest this person," or "I want you to go patrol this," or I couldn't call the state highway department and say, "I expect this road to be done today. I want you to send a road crew there." It doesn't work that way. You have to trust your management that does the day-to-day operations, like Fabian, or like Chuck and Stephanie, like JJ and Paul. I mean, people that run your, that's, they're the full-time executive branch employees, just like District 12, we have to call, you know, if there's an issue, we call Mary Holbrook.
Yep.
If there's a problem with, we need law enforcement involved, we call Captain Serber, and we ask for help. But a lot of people have this notion that going back to the magistrate system is going to fix something. Well, it's not. It's just going to be three more salaries and three more health insurance, health benefits, and it's going to cost more for the county.
And the same predicament, like right now. It goes down the chain, you know? I'm the voice to tell whichever supervisor...
Here's what people don't realize. We have probably 20 more employees in the road department right now than when you had magistrates.
Yeah.
So we've got more people getting more work done, but this notion that they could call their magistrate up and get whatever kind of favors, legal or illegal, and we know there was stuff done that shouldn't have been done, because we see it every, we're still dealing with that. You know, we still have people calling us on cemetery roads. And you know, my theory is, first of all, it's illegal to work a private cemetery road, just like it is illegal to pave a driveway. It's illegal, against the law. People go to jail for that. But the flip side of that is, when you don't have the resources to take care of a thousand miles of county roads, every dime you spend and every man hour you spend on something like that is taken away from work that is legal, and it is our responsibility. And that's why we've not had any bad audits. That's why we've not had any FBI investigations. That's why we've not had the Attorney General up here saying, "You've done illegal, something illegal." So, but I'm glad you brought that up. But if people would just go through the process, it's something else. At the end of these court meetings, Pike TV runs a list of all the work orders. So if you think the county workers aren't doing anything, just look at there. It shows all the work orders, and it shows the work orders that are in progress.
Judge, I don't think it's as much as they're saying. The county workers ain't there sending us through. They're saying we're not doing it, you know? And they don't understand it takes time.
I get, I get my share of the blame, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But you know, when you 15-year-old boy comes to us and says, "Daddy, why ain't you doing something for these people?" And so-and-so holler at him, "Well, Bubba, I've turned it in." Well, you need to get on Facebook. They're bashing you in the head.
Well, the problem is, the problem is, when you have a thousand miles of county roads, you can't fix every problem today.
Yeah, that's what I said. Somebody's got to be first, and somebody's going to be last.
You will, this county, long after the four of us are out of office, it will take years. Frankie, when I, after I became judge, what year was it we closed out some of those floods on?
The judge was still closing out February of 19, right?
Yeah. So we're still, we still not closed out the February of 19 with FEMA yet.
It just closed February 19. We've got two fewer over floods to close that are, the work's completed, but we still have, close to the February 18.
So I think there was some back in the mid-teens or early teens after I got elected. I mean...
At that point, yes.
For me, it takes a long time. And Bubby, here's another thing that really bothers me. People go on Facebook, "Well, what about all this FEMA money you got? Where did that money go?" Well, guess what? You know much money? We don't get reimbursed by FEMA until the work's done, first of all. But second, just so the public knows, we're over three months since the 2025 flood happened. We have not received one penny of money from the federal government. We have not received one penny of money from the state government. Every dime that we spent so far has been right out of the county's budget. Is that right, Frankie?
Yeah.
Have we received any, you're the county treasurer, have we received any federal money or state money?
No.
Okay? If the county hadn't been in good financial shape, if it had been in the same shape it was in when I took office, you still have people trapped in, or the county would have had to go out here and beg for money alone from somebody.
Probably about $2.5 million already spent or planned out.
Yeah. So the county has spent $2.5 million in funds on this flood already with no money that's been, no reimbursements yet. That number's going to keep going up. And the other thing I think people need to know about is, Frankie, if this had happened seven years ago in the county's financial shape, would the county have had the money to do it?
No, it would have just sat there till, till the FEMA money came in, so it's not going to be...
Yeah. So because I've got the county in good financial shape, Frankie's worked his guts out to get the county in good financial shape, we've been able to, some counties have had to go out and borrow money to get lines of credit to pay for this, we've been able to do it out of the operating budget with no tax increases. So, you know, I don't know, some of the expectations are not in line with reality, like Bubby's talking about. It's going to take time to fix some of this stuff. I had a call today about, message about Boone Mountain. We fixed that back...
It was fixed, sold it back, we fixed it. I don't understand why you feel like all today, because last week it was fixed last week.
Was it fixed last week? Well, I got some photographs. I've had two calls about it.
Oh, yeah. Did you get the video? I got the video Monday.
I mean, I don't know, but I would say that that road is going to have to have a lot of work, because it looks like its whole thing's setting down.
It will be, but that's no problem. One section, there's a small section of shelter, probably about 60 feet long, so it will have to be, you know, it will have to be shored up. We did go fix that road last week.
Come over here and sit down and see.
I'd like to get a little pressure. Love you, man.
I'm going to show, let Fabian come up here and look at this real quick, but I'm going to go ahead and move through the agenda, because Freddie's got a business obligation. So next item's approval of amendments to the May 6, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve? A motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item's knowledge, receive the Pike County Conservation District Budget and Annual Plan for fiscal year '26. Is there a motion to acknowledge? Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next is authorization for management and administrative services for the DR 4860 flood event voluntary home buyout program based upon the committee's recommendation. And the committee selected AECom Technical Services of Lexington. Are they on state contract?
No, they are in contract. It's a proposal from the government.
The question is, what's that? So we advertise as an RFP.
We don't see it, but we're not ready.
Okay. So we, the committee has selected AECom Technical Services. FEMA will pay 75%. State pays 12%. We pick up 13%. Hopefully, the safe fund, is that correct? Safe fund will pay, we can get money from the safe fund for our 13%. And this is on the home buyout program administration. Is there a motion to award the contract to AECom Technical Services?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, is her second. Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item's a motion to approve the proposal to extend the disaster recovery consulting services from Title Basin for the 4860 flood event. William, Frankie, Fabian, Chuck, and Greg reviewed the proposal with Joe Viegas of Title Basin. He was, he thought, answered all the questions about this. This is where the, their contract on the state master agreement ended, I believe, and we're having to extend it now that they've re-upped that. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
All right. Next item's adoption of resolution supportive of waste management, waste tire grant amount of $4,000 for grant period ending June 30, 2026, and authorization for the judge to execute all documents. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, is her second. Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the approval for renewable health insurance for the period of Ju., the 2026 fiscal year. Bobby can answer any questions. It's an eight and a half percent increase, is that correct, Bobby?
Yes.
Eight, 8.9% over last year, and that's one of the issues that we keep facing every year, is the increased cost of basic benefits like health insurance. So is there a motion to renew the health insurance with CAKO for the 2026 fiscal year?
Yes, motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis. I'll make a second. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. We also have approval to renew the workers' comp period for the period, the 2026 fiscal year. Bobby, what did that end up running for the '26 fiscal year?
Seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Hundred dollars.
And that was a slight decrease?
That was a decrease, but about $113,000 of the compensation, due to some safety program.
So keep in mind, when I came in this position, we didn't even have a safety program. And we have seen a pretty good reduction in the workers' comp premiums. We've not had anybody get hurt. I think the cameras in the trucks are helping. The cameras in trucks have helped us on at least two major accidents that showed that it wasn't their fault. So when, you know, you're saving $113,000 on the workers' comp side, the safer we are, the better our safety program is, the more it saves taxpayer money. So is there a motion to renew the workers' comp insurance? Motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is approval of property casualty cyber and law enforcement insurance premium for the 2026 fiscal year. Bobby, what did that premium do?
The premium is $1.8 million, $842,138, which was enough about $100,000, $150,000 up to year before. And part of that's due to better, the newer, better equipment, more value.
Yep. All right. So, so you're looking at about $2.5 million just for comp and liability insurance?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
That's all liability, that's everything, that's due to the...
Law enforcement, cyber...
The casualty center, that's all.
All right. Is there a motion to renew the property casualty cyber and law enforcement insurance for the 2026 fiscal year?
Yes, motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner, Scott, give me the second.
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. We have an approval to execute the Massa employer benefit agreement for the insurance. What is this, Bobby?
That's the actuarial insurance that we offer to employees at a, like, get it out of the paycheck.
Gotcha.
It's been a membership agreement before, and that isn't more than an actual insurance agreement. We're signing the contract for this.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to execute the Massa employer benefit agreement for the FIS cafeteria plan kind of...
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yeah, we have a, next is approval for contract for the swimming pool management of John R. Phillips Moore Park. This is a contract with Krista McCoy. It's similar to the one that we did last year. Is there a motion to, Roy and Paul can answer any questions via his, and is there a motion to approve the contract?
Yeah, I approve it.
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Lewis. Motion by Freddie, he approves it. Is there a second?
Let's go swimming.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item's the awarding of bids, Ethan and Greg. Is it fair to say we did not get a bid on the landfill expansions? Basis?
This is true. Just to follow up real quick, Judge, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with the people that plan on managing the Freeburn pool, so hopefully, next meeting, we'll have a, be able to prove a contract for that. Yeah, we had a bid opening on May 20 on Pike County landfill Phase 6 construction project. We received zero bids. KRS.45A.375 allows us to proceed to acquire a contractor by non-competitive negotiation. We are in the process of doing that. Hopefully, we can do it soon.
Gotcha.
Something that, I actually just got the final quote this morning, and I don't have a copy of this for your packets. The jail failed their fire alarm system inspection a few weeks ago. The inspector's supposed to be back in June. They don't have to have it done by then, but they have to have a plan in place to get it fixed. We got a quote through Centos, who is on Omni Partners co-op contract, which means we don't have to bid it. They've actually got five floors over there, the ground floor, then the first, second, third, and fourth. That's to bring the whole building, you know, up to speed on what they have to have, and it should be in place, and should, if we can get this done, it should be good for quite a while. They sent me a scope of work with a quote through this co-op contract. The total cost would be $85,082.38. That's something that probably we need to get done, especially with the federal inmates, the, you know, that were, you know, it's going in and out of there now. A little bit more scrutiny on, on that building possibly than it has been in the past. But the inspector's supposed to be back in June. We need to at least have a plan in place to upgrade that system. But the total cost through Centos would be $85,082.38.
I, I mean, if you're needing a motion, I'll make that motion, because I know how stringent that is over there. It has to be done. I mean, you're dealing 450, 500 lives in that building daily, and I totally think that was the right thing to do, for sure.
I'll make a second on that. So we have a motion to hire Centos to do this for the stated amount. Frankie, would that need to be paid out of the jail budget? How would that work?
Of course, the entire building, they'll split it between the jail and the Hall of Justice renewal line item, because the third and fourth floor are not jail.
Right. Gotcha. All right. So we have a motion, second, to hire Centos to do the fire system...
Upgrade.
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 And any questions, discussion, seeing them, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Anything else, Greg?
Judge, I have, I have the information on these two bridges, if you want me to present those.
Go ahead, if you want to. Fabian can chime in.
The first one is for the Concrete Woodman Summer Road Bridge. This is a bridge that we bid several weeks ago and approved the bid on. Since then, the FEMA bridge engineer has looked at it, and we have to have a change order because of some things he's wanting done. It caused, cost the price to go up quite a bit. The original bid was for $98,385 after FEMA bridge engineer looked at it and made his recommendations. And the change order for additional things are 12 to 24-inch size, Class 3 riprap, or equivalent, 100 feet upstream and downstream on both sides of the bridge, abutments and backfield rock, and dense grade for bridge abutment, additional X-braving, X-bracing, removal of existing bridge overhang brackets, and installing new ones, and removal of washed away concrete bridge decks. That causes an additional cost of $240,000, so it would make the total cost of this project
So do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, well, it's a change order, yeah, so we would need a...
We need a motion to approve the change order of the Woodman's, how much is the total now, Greg? So is there a motion to approve a change order for the amount just stated by Greg, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand?
Three thirty-eight, three eighty-five.
Three eighty-five.
Yeah, I make the motion, because the facts of it is, is no matter what we sit here and talk about as far as price wise goes.
You got the bill.
It's FEMA, it's, they're paying, they're paying, they're the ones wanting this stuff added on. And if we want them to pay a big chunk of it, we're gonna do it the way they want it done, or we're not gonna do it. So, I mean, it's pretty simple. Absolutely, yes, I make a motion that we go ahead because those people need a bridge for.
When FEMA only came out, the, the public needs to know this, we put this bids out weeks ago. It was only about two weeks ago that FEMA came out here and looked at it.
Yeah.
Maybe three, a- and not the big, like, the, uh, the legs he was talking about. So there were several of them that are, that are tore up, but there's also several of them that look visually, they look fine. And it was just a suggestion by him, which it makes sense, is to cut every one of them out, not just the ones that appear damaged, but just change all of them. So, you know, that's extra material and that stuff. And then now the X bracing, uh, the extra X bracing in between the beams, um, you know, he had suggested probably about seven more X, X braces added in. So stuff like that, it's just suggestions, but honestly, we need, uh, we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It needs to.
Eh, exactly.
Alright. And we're already gonna do it the way they tell us to do it, or suggest us to do it, or we're gonna be stuck with the bill, we're back to the beginning, you know? So I, I make a motion that we go ahead and accept this change.
We, we were trying to hurry up, trying to get these people accommodated as quick as we could. We had a contractor looked at it, he gave us a price on doing it, but that was before FEMA looked at it. Once FEMA looked at it, they wanted it done like this, this, and this.
Right.
That's the cause of the change order.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Lewis, um, we have a second to approve the change order with right concrete for the amount stated. Uh, any questions, Scott, see no matter what, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Alright, Greg?
We also have a scope of work on the Concrete Middle Elk Bridge. This was a bridge also we, uh, put out in that bid package and it was not bid on. It's just like this landfill, according to KRS dot forty-five A three seventy-five allows us to proceed to acquire a contractor by non-competitive negotiation. We are doing that. We do have a quote to get that done. This is also through right concrete. Um, it's got a lot of scope of work and detail how the bridge would be built. Um, the bottom line, the cost would be one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So is there a motion to award the contract to rebuild the Woodman Summer Bridge to right concrete for one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars? I'll make the mo-
Excuse me, Judge, this is-
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Excuse me, Judge, that's not-
That was the Elk Bridge, not Woodman Summer.
Yeah, this is the, this is the-
The Middle Elk.
This is the Middle Elk Bridge.
This is Middle Elk here. Did I say it was Woodman Summer?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we have a motion on the Middle Elk Bridge. My motion to award it to right concrete for one million, nine eighty-five, three twenty-five.
I second it.
Second it. Any questions, Scott? So you have no matter what, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I have, Judge.
Right before, so before we go on in, just to let the folks in the Middle Elk area and, and the Woodman Summer area know, because I know that it's a question, uh, no doubt, because they call, you know, or message or whatever asking. So as of today, this approval and these, us accepting and voting on this, they will start work at Woodman Summer Tuesday, correct?
Yeah, now, there is a little bit of an assumption in that, because we do have to get the contract signed. So we do have to have that contract signed, but Greg's gonna get that contract to me, Judge, Greg, Roy, and then I will take it straight to Leon, get them to sign it. So we can start on Tuesday, absolutely. And then also, we, he also, he did tell me, and this is for the people at Middle Elk. So there's a lot of, uh, like ordering the beams and, and, so he's gonna go ahead and start while he's doing the Woodman Summer job. He will go ahead and place the orders for all the material that he will need. So, so, uh, his best guess is around two weeks is what it will take him to have that Woodman Summer passable. You know, have them crossing that bridge in around two. So hopefully, we can start the, he will start that in, say, three weeks.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's the goal, that's the timeline we're hoping to get.
He's actually starting Middle Elk Tuesday, but just not physically.
Yeah, not physically.
But ordering all the stuff that he needs, so, so-
And I wanted the people to know that, that they're, that he's not waiting until he gets this Woodman Summer project done before he does anything on the Middle Elk.
Right.
You know, okay? I just wanted to know that he, he will begin working on it, just, he's not, they're not gonna see boots on the ground.
Right, it won't be physical work, but it'd be getting all his materials, so, so they both really actually will be starting to get some work done Tuesday.
As soon as that contract's signed, as soon as we get this contract signed, then he, he's ready, he's like, tell me, we'll start on Tuesday.
I'll try to get those contracts wrote this afternoon and then try to round up the signatures I need on it and, uh, and, and get those contracts executed as soon as possible.
And, and I'd also like to thank the folks over at Woodman Summer and Middle Elk too, because, you know, uh, they, they have been, I, I know they've run into some issues and I get it, you know, they can't cross the river when it's raining, a- all those things. But, but all in all, for the most part, a lot of those folks over there has been very understanding and very appreciative of what we've already done.
Really, and really patient.
And really patient.
But I'd also, just to throw on there, again, the, the co-company up there on top, I mean, I, I called because there was an issue with the, but I'll just say there was an issue, so they had kind of blocked that road off, so whenever the river got up, they couldn't go across the hill, but no, they did reopen that course.
Yeah.
They just took one phone call there and I, you know, I'd just like to tell them how appreciative we are that they, they did allow them to cross through there.
Very thankful for, for all parties that's helped out, for sure.
It's a tough situation. We tried our best to make the best of it. Thank you.
Alright, alright. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, current and completed and scheduled work orders?
A motion?
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions, Scott, see no matter what, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Alright, maybe you got anything on the updates for anyone?
No, unless there's any questions, I don't, I really don't.
Alright. Treasurer's business, Frankie?
I'll do these as one motion. Uh, authorized check for lodging registration expenses for any employee needs to attend the 2025 SOAR Summit, August twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth in Corbin, Kentucky. Authorized payment of expenditure approval list dated May twenty-first, plus any other utility bills received before we run checks.
Um, alright, is there a motion to approve the treasurer's items of business as stated?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lewis, second by Commissioner Atkins, any questions, Scott, see no matter what, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Frankie, are we in pretty good shape right now? Just so you just give the public, financially, are we okay? That's, that's- In RCS.
Okay. By the top of them this morning, they are processing, including the money for the, uh, three cup. Uh, there was, it's, well, there was a little holdup that they were laying on, but they decided not to lay it on the good way. And that portion happened, probably, because of the small players, but they will see that one, uh, it should be a no. Yeah, so it should be your decision.
So the one question we need to talk about is when this Middle Elk Bridge hits almost two million, is that gonna cause a cash flow issue?
It will cause a cash flow issue, but it will-
Reduce our balance pretty quickly.
I think if all these bridges start going down before we, uh, yeah, start getting some money, it will start causing some cash flow issues. I mean, those two bridges, I have heard anything, I think they say that.
We'll, we'll just have to call the safe fund to try to see if we can't, you know, I'll call down to emergency management, see what I can figure out.
I think, I think when we were talking about the increases before, that, uh, how they would put a road through on two, uh, obligations, they would have to-
Alright, alright. Anything else? Treasurer's business, alright. Next item is, uh, we just got two, um, personnel matters. If there's any questions, we can go into executive session. I don't think there's anything major approval to acknowledge hiring Cody Lawson, solid waste loader, two H rate of pay effective five eleven twenty-five and to acknowledge hiring Steve Lane at Public Works. As a carpenter, five H rate of pay effective five nineteen twenty-five. He missed you, didn't he, Paul? Glad to have Steve back. So is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions, Scott, see no matter what, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Alright, any, anything from any of our department supervisors? JJ, come on up.
I live out through the court, remember that Greg, Lou Man, uh, I just, I remember his family, uh, he's my cousin and Jim Wade, brother.
Sorry to hear that.
Remember, remember that family.
Appreciate it. We will do that.
Yeah, Greg, he was a great guy. He, he worked for me for several years. I'm over over at Seaton for a little while.
Okay. Hey, Jimmy, you got something you need to talk about electrical permits?
Judge, uh, a few years back, we had a community assisted business that NFIP does. And one of the recommendations was for us to pass an ordinance about these electrical inspections, so we could catch before people started doing all their construction and building the floodplain and build too low and all that stuff. And I've noticed in the last little bit that, uh, a lot of the inspectors are not getting their flood exemption letter or their, uh, flood permit to, to develop in the floodplain. And I, I'd like for all of them, if they care of this, to, to come and the contractors. All, anybody builds a house or a mobile home dealer or whatever, they need to make sure that these people that they're working for gets notified. We get notified before they set these homes and build these homes in the floodplain. You know, this, this county is so big that, that something may be going over in Middle Elk or somewhere and we, we never know it. And then if I happen to drive by or something and see it, or somebody builds a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and they build it this far below the, the base flood elevation, they can't insure that home. They just, they can't afford it. So we, and I'm gonna probably send a letter, get the list and send out to the electrical inspectors and let them know that they need to, before they, if somebody calls for an electrical inspection, before they go out, they need to tell that homeowner, whoever, to contact our office and get their number or their permit before they go out.
We had that issue come up, up on old, or on four sixty.
Yeah, up at, uh, Yalla Hill.
Yalla Hill. There was a, somebody put a home in.
Was ready to put it in, yeah.
And they couldn't get their electrical hooked up because it was right in, it was in the floodplain.
Floodway.
Floodway, which was-
Floodway.
I mean, and they had bought the property not knowing it was in the floodway.
Yeah, correct.
And, you know-
And they would probably got washed away.
They probably would have got washed away. This, this time.
This time. Yeah.
So it's important, I mean, you know, without the floodplain office, you can't get flood insurance. We have to have, that's a required position. Without a floodplain coordinator, the county's not, you know, el- the county residents aren't eligible for flood insurance.
Right.
And there are things that the county has to do to make sure that we stay in compliance. And that's one of the things we have to do, is to make sure that people are not building in the floodway.
Yeah, and we also do the, uh, the CRS, the Community Rating System, which very many, if you call to get flood insurance, the very many, they type in our community number, you automatically get a five percent discount. And we're working, hopefully in the next year or so, move to a class eight, which will give them a ten percent discount. As soon as we, as soon as we can get that paperwork in place and get it switched over.
Appreciate your hard work, Jim.
No problem.
Alright, so, um, anything else from any of the department supervisors? Stephanie, you have company today? Um, she, she has slept through most of this. A lot, a lot of other people watching it probably have too.
Hey, Judge, I, I did want to say that we did get our budget back from Frankfurt, signed off on by D O G. And we'll have that at the next court meeting for the second reading and adoption.
Gotcha. Um, alright, Roy, you got anything?
I just, one thing I want to say on the first one, but the second topic- My life, I got an ambulance ride. The first one, when I was medevaced, when I was in the army. And last week, I had a little incident here at the courthouse and I wanna just, uh, I'm doing well. Uh, but I want to thank, uh, Rhonda and Robert from the county attorney's office for noticing that I was in a little bit of distress. But the thing that I, uh, Marcus Riddle and Evan Kimberlin from the, uh, local rescue, those guys did an excellent job. Um, you know, we've had a lot of instances, you know, with the first responders, that they've been extremely busy. These two guys showed up, they took good care of me, they got me to the hospital. Uh, I just want to give them a, acknowledge them and say, thanks, guys, because they did a great job.
Thank you, Roy.
Roy, what time you're up, I, I'll ask you a question here. Uh, I had a, uh, lady that we represent over in the District Three area that reached out to me from Hardy Road, Oh Hardy Road. And she stated that she had around eleven abandoned homes, uh, right behind her and all the trees and brush and, and, and all the stuff is, it's growing over onto her place and it's actually over top of her garage. Uh, she sent me a picture, it's, it's really, she's really got a mess up there. And she's just seeking advice on what she needs to do in order to try to get that cleaned up where all those are abandoned. What's her first steps?
What I would recommend at this point is for her to call our Solid Waste Department, that's, uh, four three two six two four five. And to, what they will probably do more likely is send one of their investigators out if, because I've gotta have some basic information, the county attorney does, office to, uh, work these up. Once we get the field report, uh, in from the investigator, then we'll do some work and kind of advise her. I will tell you one issue that we run into with abandoned properties, if by some happens, they, it's owned by somebody that lives out of state. We've had some success, but it drags on and on and on, because you've got to contact them if they're not living here locally. Now, we have had quite a bit of success in getting properties cleaned up if they're owned by somebody local, because normally if I send them a letter and say, you know, and, uh, the Solid Waste Department has been really good. Uh, and they're like everybody else, they're taxed, you know, with their abilities. But if somebody needs some, like dumpsters and that kind of thing, I'm not gonna pay for them, but I can, the, the, they will help them, get them out there. If there's a cost, they'll have to work that out with them. But sometimes if there's a, a big need for those, they may have to wait a little bit. So you get a letter from us and says, you've got thirty days to clean this up, and you call the Solid Waste and they say, look, we're booked up for two weeks. You call and let us know, we'll extend that thirty days for another two weeks. We're not, our intent is to help people get things cleaned up. Uh, at the same time, you've got to realize that we're all, our abilities to do things are taxed to the, you know, we only got so much equipment, we only got so much money. But, you know, if you totally ignore me, I, I don't appreciate that. So if you get a letter from me and ask, you know, that says this needs to be cleaned up, uh, get back in touch with me. The difference, if they're out of state, it's a little bit harder to reach out and text them. But if they're local, most people, once you start the dialogue, it, they will get it cleaned up, has been my experience. And that is our intent, is to not drag people into court and find them, but to get it cleaned up. But if you insist on not cooperating, we will use every means we have, including fines and liens and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Appreciate that. Hopefully, that helped a lot of people out there that has that question.
One of the problems you have is the, the ordinance that was put in place, Judge Rutherford did something that had not been done. I think Bobby remembers they put that abandoned property ordinance in. The county has to condemn it after a process. Then the county tears it down, disposes of it, and then sues them, the property owner, to get the money back. The problem is, you're, you, there's no guarantee you get that money back and the county doesn't have the money or manpower to start tearing these things down. There's hun- hundreds. When we did the broadband study in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, they identified over seven hundred abandoned structures in the county. That's a lot. So, I mean, and, and there's, and a lot of these people are, you know, people died out. Their children or grandchildren or whoever their heirs are live out of state, but they don't want the property. They just walk away from it. They're not gonna spend any money on trying to clean it up. And if you, you can't, you know, if you've got somebody living in Florida and it's their great grandmother's house at Hardy, or the great aunt or whoever it may be, I mean, and it's already falling in, they're not gonna do anything with it. And it just, there's no easy solution to it. You agree with that? Am I wrong on that, Roy?
No, it, it just to add a little bit to that, one thing that I see quite common, we all know that when you go and, or some elderly people, they go in the nursing home. Well, guess what? If they're on state Medicaid, they put a lien on the property. And I've had this happen, where the family, you call them and say, go clean it up, and they're like, why? The state's taking it. Uh, then we gotta go deal with the state. So that is what the judge is talking about. It's a very common problem in this area in airship property, because we gotta identify who owns it before we can even start to try to get it corrected. But that happens a lot more than you wish and a lot of people, just for whatever reason, they don't even report these deaths. Uh, some of them, because they get an exemption, because they're, you know, if their grandparents are elderly, they're getting that property tax exempted, so they die. They don't report it, you know, because they're still getting the exemption, but they're not there to take care of the property either.
Right. Thank you, guys.
Um, anybody else have anything? Alright. All right.
Judge, I, I do got a couple of things I just need to run over really quick. So the flood wall in South Wimson, I know that, you know, we've got some complaints and stuff about it, the, it needs weed eaten. Um, it, it's kind of falls back to, to exactly what Bubby was talking about also, but I also want to say that, you know, the county does not weed eat. And, uh, that, that's not what the county does. They don't go out and cut the grasses and things like that. Uh, so Brian Morse, I wanna, I wanna thank Brian Morse, because I spoke to, uh, the jailer last week. He's gonna go down and cut the South Wimson flood wall and do the weed eating and stuff, but it's gonna be probably next week. And I totally understand why, because we got Memorial Day coming up and they try to make sure that all the graveyards and, and all that are, are taken care of and then, you know, looks good for, for the families and stuff when they come around. So that's really a huge deal to, to be able to get to do that for those families. So just as soon as Memorial Day's over, uh, Jeller Moore said that he would have a crew down. So I want to thank him for that. Um, you know, the trail system, um, I do want to say this, Representative Mitch Whitaker did reach out to me. Uh, I know there's a lot of people due to a post, it was, that came out of electric county, uh, and it wasn't quite explained the way it should have been explained, uh, from the way he, uh, explained it to me. Uh, I want you to know that with this law, where you can take and bring your side by side in, have it inspected, have it street legal and all that, it's very important that the people knows that this is totally optional. And, and I'll use myself as, you know, an example. I've got a side by side, but I live in the main head of a dollar and all I use it for is around my place. Uh, I don't have plans on going out and getting on the main road and, and, and driving up and down the main road. So therefore, it's optional. You don't have to do this, but if you plan on riding on the main road, the way that the, uh, state representative explained it to me, then you will have to do that in order to be legal. But just because you on a side by side does not mean that you have to come over here and get it licensed and tagged and, and all that stuff. That only means if you plan on riding on the main road, then at that point in time you would need to get it licensed and insured.
Thank you, Judge. Judge, what is it?
Act that Commissioner Lewis is talking about, it's SB 63, it's a new law, goes in effect June 27th. It's an act relating, relating to what is now called street legal special purpose vehicles, which we include side by sides. For this act to take place in Pike County and for these vehicles to be allowed on the highways within Pike County Fiscal Court's jurisdictional, jurisdictional boundaries, including state highways, we would have to, in our next two fiscal court meetings, June 30th, June 17th, pass an ordinance, first reading, second reading, where that law would not become effective in Pike County. Over 70 some counties, last report I got from CAECO have already passed a draft ordinance. CAECO.
Do you have a dra, do you have a draft ordinance on it, Jerry?
I do. CAECO, by demand, felt like they were forced into putting a draft ordinance out, and they did, but with a disclaimer, that the administrative regulations have not yet been promulgated, and they said they never, or hardly ever, will do a draft ordinance until the administrative regulations are promulgated. So they put a disclaimer on their draft ordinance, that if the regulations change what this law is perceived to be right now, you may have to go back and amend your, or your ordinance.
Your ordinance.
I wanted the court to be aware of both of those, those things especially.
Can you get with Roy and get it, cause Roy, can you get a copy of that bill for us? Jerry, you may have.
I've got it. Get it. Jerry's right, my recommendation to him, because he came to me, Jerry came to me when we first saw this come out, and my recommendation is we probably should wait till the rules are promulgated, so we know what we're dealing with. The law itself, if you recall, we passed the ordinance, uh, so that we could try to get certain vehicles on the state highway. So we have an ordinance that we can basically work with, but till we see what the, the cabinets are gonna require, it, it's kind of a little bit iffy to put a regular, you know, as you know.
Is it gonna require regular, or insurance and things like that?
It's, it requires motorcycle insurance, it requires a lot of the same things we already had, but it, it's a motorcycle type insurance that it requires.
If I may, this, uh, Street Legal Special, Special Purpose Vehicle Act requires, must be inspected, inspected by a certified inspector, which will be the sheriff's office or other certified inspectors. Inspection fee will be $25. You'll have to have proof of insurance with the same tort liability amounts as motorcycles now in Kentucky. Must be registered in the county court clerk's office. That registration fee will be $10. A motorcycle plate will be issued, which must be illuminated with a white light, and there is 16 safety features that the vehicle will have to have on them briefly, turn signals, brake lights, a windshield or eye protection, roll cage, there are 16 of them that they have to have before they pass inspection. I took vacation days last Thursday, Friday, and Monday of this week. Uh, when I got back, I'm getting a lot of phone calls, some pressure from legislators, local ATV, UTV dealers, and a lot of riders that are wanting Eric County to have this in place. Now, I have to yield to Colonel Downey what's best for the county's position, but if we don't have an ordinance in place, this law going to effect June 27th, but it won't apply in Pike County unless we pass the ordinance.
But we can always, we could adopt it later, is that?
We could adopt it later. There could be, there could be a lot of dissatisfied people that all these other counties have passed ordinance and they can write a leg on those counties.
Judge, I think some people, it, I could be wrong on this, but till they promulgate all these regulations, I'm not sure that the law can go into effect. Um, and it, it kind of adds to that right there. We can have one ready by the next meeting. I don't think that's an issue. Uh, but, and, and Jerry just gave me some of this information this morning, because he's getting, I guess, a lot of, uh, people thinking that this law is gonna become effective on the day they say. The law may be effective, but your regulations aren't in place. I mean, we have, and it's the same bunch that turned down the Elkhorn, when we were trying to get that little road up to Elkhorn. Uh, you know, if they come in and kibosh it again, you know, we can get something, uh, put together, that isn't a real question. I think that, that misinformation is kind of floating out there, because I think without the regulations, that this doesn't really, it may be a law, but there's, you know, it says it has, the regulations have to be promulgated, so they haven't been done.
Let's do this, before the next court meeting, let's have a draft.
We'll have a draft with you.
And then let's reach out to, um, state representative and see if they can find out Mitch Whitaker, whoever, find out when we can, when they expect the administrative regulations to be promulgated.
I started, it's a Senate bill, I, I started reaching out to Senator Wheeler yesterday, which I spoke with Representative Whitaker yesterday. He had called Jeannie the, the day before, wanting us to get, get on board and get our ordinance drafted, if, if we seen fit.
Well, I mean, I think Roy's probably right on this. I mean, if you don't know what the regulations are gonna be, I mean, so, so here's the problem you have with this, is I see it, they may not even have in the clerk's office yet, uh, the, the, the protocols written on how they issue these yet.
I actually went down and visited Darrell Pugh this morning. I know he was gone, he was on the road yesterday to the court, uh, clerk's meeting, and they announced that Cavus will have this in place by June 27th, which I'll be honest, it surprised me.
Yeah.
I've got a message in Sheriff Scott, and he's gonna get back to me by today's end if the sheriff's inspection will be in place or not.
We've got a couple of weeks, or a week or so to get this thing done, so.
I want to go ahead and, I knew, uh, Commissioner Lewis is gonna speak on today, so I wouldn't bring it before the court, let us know where we're at, so we, we'll know if we want to be ready by June 27th, if we decide to wait till the regulations are promulgated.
I need to speak to you after the court meeting too, if you don't care.
I'm sorry.
Can you come by the office after the court meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, anything else? Freddie, anything?
Uh, no, that's, you know, I, I'd like to agree with what Bubby was talking about at the beginning of the court meeting. I think it's, uh, a really good topic that he brought up, you know, we're, a lot of our people out there is under the assumption that, you know, like, we can just call up the road department, or we can call up, you know, those guys, whatever, and say, hey, go and do this. And, you know, that's not the way the law works. That's not the way, that's not the way it is. And, you know, you can even talk to magistrates in different counties, you know, if you, when you go to that training commissioners, and I, you know, there was one magistrate out in the, from, uh, West Kentucky, and me and him was talking, he's like, man, he said, that's crazy. He said, I've been a magistrate for years and years, he said, and I've known better than to, than to give a work order to somebody to go do something, he said, because, you know, at the end of the day, regardless of what has happened in the past, the facts of it is, is, you know, we, we are representatives of our area. That's what we are, just like a state representative, you know, just like the judge said, I mean, as even a senator, you can't call up the transportation cabinet and say, hey, go pave this road, you know? It, it don't matter that you're a state representative or a state senator, that's not how that works. And it's very important, it's very important that the, that the folks understand that, you know, as a commissioner or magistrate, you are a representative of your district. You represent your people. You don't have authority to go and tell people what to do. And, you know, I know that it's, it's tough coming out of that, because we have done that for many, many, many years. Um, and unfortunately, sometimes, you know, we, maybe, maybe us, maybe commissioners, we, we take the hit, because, you know, we are doing it, and there's one thing that I know, when I lay my head down on my bed at night, I don't have to worry about the FBI coming to my house and knocking on my door saying, why did you go tell them to go do this? Or why did you tell them to go do that? Because that's not my job. I represent my district, and if it's got, has needs, if it has things that needs to be done, then sure, I mean, I'm gonna represent my district, I'm gonna take it to the fiscal court, take it to the proper, you know, department head, explain to them what needs to be done, whether it be Public Works, whether it be Fabian, uh, Chuck in Solid Waste, you know, I just represent the needs of our, we just represent the needs of that district. We are not some kind of, you know, authoritative figure that goes out there and tells people what to do, and tells the road department what to do, and tells public, that's not our, that's not what we do.
Yeah, the prob, the problem was.
And I liked what Bubby brought that up, because it needed to be brought up.
Well, and here's the thing, Fabian will tell you, when he worked in the road department for 27 years, when the magistrates called the shots, they would, and he'll tell you this, before I, the day I told him I was running for judge, we had this conversation, this has probably been seven years ago. He said, you know, we'd start a project, and the magistrate would call and say, stop what you're doing, and run and take care of this. And you might have to go from Vergey to Shelby Gap or Ash Camp, or you'd have to go from the head of Long Fork to Robeson Creek. And when you do that, you don't get anything done.
And the thing was, Stu, guys, is I, I worked all of Pike County for years.
And it was.
And it wasn't just one area.
It was all, the whole, it was the whole county.
That would happen. And then what happens, and why it's good that, that it's set up the way it is right now, is because you could get nothing done. I mean, like I said, you would, you would have everything on, everything there to start a job and then get called off. So you've already wasted over half a day for nothing. You know, and so at the end of the day, you know, that, this is a better way, because honestly, you can look at our work orders, we do get a lot more done now than what, what was done before. And I know that maybe some people disagree with that, but honestly, I have the work roots, and I have the work history that we've done, and we do, we do, we do a lot of work.
And I'd like to say this, I mean, even this morning, this morning when I was walking in this courthouse to come to this meeting, I got a call from another elected official. And it's, you know, I'm glad that I know the situation, that way I could speak up about it, but I got a call from another elected official saying, hey, so and so called me and wants to know why you guys are not taking care of his road. And I said, let me explain something to you. It's not that we don't want to, it's not that we're trying to be mean or rude or whatever, but unfortunately, that road is not a county road. That is a private road, and we're not gonna take care of that road. I mean, you know, I don't, I cannot help that they may have took care of something 15 years ago, 10 years ago, 200 years ago. Um, unfortunately, if it is a private road, guys, it's a private road. And that's what I told the elected official, I said, man, I, you know, we can't. And he said, oh, well, I'm glad you told me. He didn't know it was private either. He was under the impression it was a county road also. And I told him, I said, no, it's not a county road. I said, we cannot touch that, we can't send people up there, you know? It, it's sad, but it's just the truth. I mean, it, it, it happens a lot. I mean, I get calls and saying, hey, you all want to fix this. Uh, they always fixed it before, they always paved it before, they always scraped it before. And then, you know, I call and, and, and the road department pulls it up and says, hey, this is a PR road, meaning a private road. This is not even a county road. And, you know, that's a tough call to have to, to call back and say, you know, hey, I hate to tell you this, but you're, that's not a county road you're calling about. You know, so, so I, we find that a lot, and, you know, I mean, we gotta, I know what, I'm, I'm gonna do what's right. I'm not laying in bed waiting on the FBI to come and knock on my door.
Come and get you.
I'm not gonna do it. I'm not gonna lose my family, I'm not gonna be stripped away from my grandchildren, and I'm not gonna go to the penitentiary, I'm not even gonna go to court to testify about stuff being done illegally that I'm part of. I'm not, this job is not worth me or my family going to jail over. I, it just ain't. I mean, I'm, and I'm not gonna do it. It's either legal or it's illegal. And there's no gray areas there. If it's right to do, I'm 100% behind it. If it's wrong to do, I absolutely don't want nothing to do with it, you know? So it's not that you're picking on somebody or not doing your job, it's illegal.
Yeah. But I, I wanna add, I wanna add.
I'd like to, guys, we'll get a chance like this.
Even like with these bridges, we have, I've had situations come up where the county has worked on or maintenance bridges in the past, but they, it was never in the system. So now, you know.
Me and you found one.
And now those bridges get washed out through this flood and people are calling. And honestly, those people, because they know that the county in the past had worked it, they just assumed that it was a county road.
Yep.
They didn't know that it wasn't. And now I'm telling them that it's not, and we can't work on it. And honestly, it's not that, it's not that anyone doesn't want to, it's just that we have to follow the law, and if it's not in the county road system, we can't touch it, you know? And, and unfortunately, some of those roads, because our criteria has, it was raised by the Attorney General, so now it takes four homes, whereas before it was two homes. So some of those, they wouldn't even qualify to be a county road now if we wanted to put them in to the road system.
I like to say that. They, a lot of your problem is with a lot of your people that, you know, they was always used to the master form of government, and a lot of them still don't know no better. I mean, they don't know the difference, you know what I mean? And, uh, I've been in almost two and a half years, and I'll, I'll tell you how I operate. When one of my people calls me, I go see him, I look at it, and pretty well I know if it's, if it's for us to fix, you know what I mean? And then I call Fabian and recommend it. And, but I never recommended one road that I didn't look at, or a break, or a drain. I, I've never recommended one that I didn't see, that I didn't go respect them people and this, be there.
Right.
I just wanted to let you know how I operate.
Yeah.
And back to me this morning, I still want people to call me, I'll still take it to Fabian, I'll still take it to Chuck, or whoever it goes to. I'm not saying I don't want people to call, because that's, that's my job, is to be their voice here with the ones that cheer. I'm not saying that, but I'm just not wanting to get the blame if it, you know, everything that's going on in this county, everybody can't be first, you know? And we can't get everywhere at once, and, you know, it's not my fault I can't call Fabian and say, I want you little card today, getting it done right now. I don't have that authority. We have our authority right here in this court meeting, and that's what a lot of people needs to understand. When we leave here, I'm Bubby, this is Freddie, and that's wrong, you know, but we're the voice for each district we represent, and that, that's, that's just what I, I wanted to get out to people, because like I said, young, you know, an old dog can only get kicked in a corner so long, and, you know, it gets enough's enough.
I'm glad you put that out there, though.
I mean, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're just.
People say, well, why can't you get that done?
There's so much to do, and I'm not playing the blame game. I'm not blaming nobody, because workers are doing their job, Fabian's doing his, everybody's doing their job, but there's just so much, like, and, and back, and I sound like a broken record, somebody's gonna be first. Like, and, and back, and I sound like a broken record. Somebody's going to be first and somebody's going to be last. And Fabian goes out and does good at prioritizing what needs to be done, and they get it done.
And that's what I was going to say too, is what you said, is we try our best to prioritize these in the severity. I mean, you know, honestly, I know all potholes are serious, and I know that they need to be fixed. But if a pothole doesn't rate up there with a break in a road where it could cause someone to wreck or a school bus, it's a problem. So, you know, you fix the break first, then you do the pothole.
Yeah, yesterday at five o'clock, there was a drain up on Hellier Street. A lady messaged me. And it was apparently, we had no, no, no idea what happened. There was a sinkhole.
Yeah, I got the same call and got a hold of Fabian too.
Five o'clock. So, you know, it was right at five when I called, God, I didn't call Fabian. I mean, it was a dangerous situation. And you had to drop off, you know, after hours, the guys were getting off, but yet they're going out and starting a project, a pretty big project at five o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, and people don't realize, every time we have one of these rain events or wind events, multiple trees down across the county. And these road workers are getting called out in the middle of the night to cut trees. Sometimes there's power lines or, you know, telephone lines, whatever involved. And then they get in, you know, they, sometimes they don't even get back in bed. They end up going straight to the road lot and start work.
And so whenever you, you know, you, you can't give a number right now of how many, how much damage we have, on how many. Because, you know, the judge keeps saying 3,000, and that isn't going to be a correct number. But it's just like the issue that he called me on yesterday, that was the flooding, that was damaged from the flood. It was just.
Just took it on the fall in.
It didn't show up until yesterday or at five o'clock. You know, so those are still being added and found.
Yeah, the guy that called me, I've known him all my life. He said, Bubbs, and I, I don't know if you can go see any help or not. I said, we can't get out. I said, what's going on? He sent me the pictures. Did you ever get the pictures I tried to send you? But, and I called Fabian and told him, he, uh, he sent me a message last night thanking everybody. Because, you know, they was trapped in behind their house because this big sinkhole come just out of nowhere.
Like I said, that was caused by the flood. And that's one reason why the judge can't give, or no one can give, an exact number of how many, how many damage sites we have. Because they, they do keep growing still today. They're only three months out from the flood and we're still finding things.
How long, how long can them sites be assessed? How much time you've got?
60 days from the time.
Yeah, 60 days. 60 days from the kick, from that kickoff meeting.
That's been probably.
We're pretty deep into that now.
No, no, not really. That kickoff meeting wasn't about, what?
Three weeks ago.
It was just about three weeks ago.
60 days.
I know a lady that had a slide that come into the store to her house, uh, Sunday night, or Friday night maybe, Saturday night. Is she past the point? Could she get famous to look at that?
That would be AI. I'm not so sure about that. I don't know.
I'm not sure that deadline's not already passed on individual systems.
Actually, it was one, because, hey, it, it pushed her house, it went through her bedroom. Charlene Fuller, she works with me and.
She, she needs to probably call, I don't know if the DRCs are still open or are they there? Are they still open? I think they are. She probably can go to the DRC and see if she can file a claim. Tim Fields could answer that for you, Bubby. All right. Anybody have anything else? All right, I don't have anything. Freddie, you want to say benediction?
Heavenly Father, Lord, as we come unto you today, we thank you, God, for this wonderful day you've given us, Lord. Thank you for the business that was conducted today. Lord, we thank you for making a way that we're able to get started on the bridges for the folks in Woodman Summer and Middle Elk. I know that they've had some very hard times, some very trying times over in that area. God, we pray that you would bless our workers, Lord, as they're out there working on the road department, the solid waste department, our public works, men and women. God, I pray that you would bless and lead and guide and direct each and every one of them every day of their life. Lord, we pray for the ones that's less fortunate than we are, the ones that might not have a job today, the ones that might not have a home to go home today. The ones that might not have a road to get back to their house. Lord, we pray that you would bless them in a mighty great way and watch over them. And in all these things we pray, we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. My Commissioner Atkins, I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes, we are adjourned.